For the record, Mayor and Council are appearing virtually via Microsoft Teams. The meeting is being streamed on YouTube at youtube.com/cityoftucson.live. There are four of us with Constitute Quorum in person, and Councilmember Cunningham, Councilwoman Lee, and Councilmember Fimbres are attending the meeting virtually. So we move on to item one. Councilmember Dahl and I requested an update on the city's vacant and neglected structures program. The vacant and neglected structure buildings have been really detrimental to the vitality and health of our neighborhoods. And sometimes our business corridors in the city of Tucson. I remember when Mayor and Council first created Vans program back in 2009, over 60 vacant buildings were demolished in order for new life to come into the community and to reuse the space for something our community really needs. When Councilmember Dahl and I started seeing more and more vacant buildings within the community, and this has been going, many of these situations have been going on for years, we decided together to bring this item to Mayor and Council to try and find a solution and possibly even mirror other cities' processes for dealing with vacant and neglected structures. One of the conversational pieces that Councilmember Dahl and I had was that we revamp our program to match the city of Phoenix program, to be more efficient. And I just wanted to directly address something that I've been hearing, that this particular action will not be a punitive action for property owners. This is not about weeds growing in the front yard. This is about slum lords that are absentee slum lords in our community and that many times hoard property across our city, sit on this property, and without regard to the neighborhood that it's affecting. So these owners do not care about our community, they do not care about our neighborhoods, and many times these particular owners live outside of our state, really much collecting rent. So we need our Vans program to work efficiently in order to meet the need of our community and make sure that we are being proactive for the vitality of our neighborhoods. With that, I just wanted to have Councilmember Dahl introduce this item because I know that he has gone through this process recently, and it's taken a big old effort. So Councilmember Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor. Vacant and neglected structures affect every ward, but in Ward three, we see a lot of them. And it's not just property sitting vacant, unused, but there are attractive nuisances, which in turn take up valuable city resources from police department, code enforcement, and in some cases, the Tucson Fire Department as fires are started. Many of these problem properties, as you pointed out, are owned by out-of-state and absentee landlords who just don't care about the negative impact. And we're not asking, we're asking them to take care of it or else. And our or else takes too long. I want to highlight one Vans property story on my board, but before I do, I want to thank some people in the city who have been working on this. I want to thank Lori Pumphrey in Code Enforcement, who our office works closely with. Lori works with a team of only 11 inspectors at this point and less than half of what we used to have in that department. I want to thank Shilpa from the city's Attorney's Office. Her knowledge and expertise on the subject is invaluable. And also Sam Credio, who before he was with the Department of Transportation and Mobility, took a deep dive into this program. One example in my ward, near Stone and Oracle, a landlord let their apartment sit vacant, awaiting improvements, who knows when, without fencing or adequate security. Neighbors, including neighboring businesses, were greatly affected by nightly incidents of prostitution and drug dealing that occurred there. Police had to respond almost every night. Through no fault of their own, it took code enforcement way too long to deal with this situation because of the timeline and procedures we have in place that we need to change. It included multiple inspections, notices, and court appearances, and I was a witness at one of those until the situation improved. We really had to force them, and I think there's better ways as that city, that will remain unnamed, so the North is done. We have some presentations. Is it Carlos's turn? And then I hope we'll hear from Shilpa, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahl. We do have Carlos de la Torre virtually with us, so if you'd like to present, and I know that the city Attorney's Office also has a presentation for us. Carlos?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At the request of yourself and Councilmember Dahl, I'd like to provide you with a brief overview and update of the city's vacant and neglected structures, as you pointed out, commonly known as the Vans program. Ms. Shilpa Hunter Patel from the City Attorney's Office will provide you with an overview of some of the proposed modifications to our Vans program intended to streamline the process, but also propose abatement lien foreclosure process as a tool to expedite the redevelopment of these properties. On March 1st of 2023, the Independent Audit and Performance Commission concluded their audit of the Code Enforcement Division as requested by Councilmember Durham. The audit identified nine basic recommendations ranging from allocating additional code enforcement staff to handle the caseload to update on our code enforcement manual. Some of the audit findings can be addressed or taken care of administratively. For example, the city manager has authorized us to overfill for code enforcement inspector positions and underfill with community safety officers, again with the intent is really to shore up so we can do more cases as needed. Some of the recommendations will require policy direction, specifically a shift to the process and management of the Vans program will certainly require Mayor and Council direction. Vacant and neglected structures have always been a problem for the perspective of neighborhood preservation, but today, they have become very problematic, where most of them are being broken into, most of them have squatters, and have become a magnet for crime, creating significant safety and nuisance issues for the neighborhoods, requiring additional calls for service from police, fire, and code enforcement, as just recently pointed out by Councilmember Dahl. Today, the city has 30 active cases that fall into the category of Vans program. Over the past year, we have demolished four properties. The best-case scenario really to handle a Vans case is about six months from initial complaint to demolition. The abatement costs incurred by the city are billed to the property owner. If the costs are not immediately paid, the city records a lien of the property. The collection of the lien occurs only when the property is sold. It may be years before the city recovers, which really, that situation limits the city's ability to recover its costs within a reasonable timeframe. The issue that we face today is that even with the Vans properties being demolished, the neighborhood nuisances do not go away if the property is not redeveloped and/or reactivated. It really changes from being a vacant home to an empty lot that becomes an attractive nuisance ranging from homelessness activity to the accumulation of weeds, trash, and debris. We can certainly pursue the code enforcement process to address these new code violations, but it's not very effective as we go back to square one on deal with an irresponsible property owner. Adopting an abatement lien foreclosure process as a tool will be very helpful and really would be another mechanism really to expedite essentially the process and incentivize the process for the properties to be redeveloped. Mayor, that concludes my remarks. I'm turning it over to Ms. Shilpa Hunter Patel to provide you an overview of some of the recommendations and possible next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Mayor, councilmembers. As Carlos said, this is sort of becoming a recurring and more increasing problem recently, where we're seeing more and more properties where our code enforcement folks have gone in, done some initial abatement work. Sometimes there's boardups associated with that, and we typically will be able to lien those properties. However, we do not have a program in place to have a policy or a set process to try to proactively identify properties that we would want to recover those costs, taxpayer funds that were paid into, out of the budget to do that work, but also to try to, as Carlos said, move these properties along in the process so they don't stay in a boarded or in an attractive nuisance condition for extended, long periods of time. That has caused a significant drain on our law enforcement and on our fire folks during the winters that they can also give a fire hazard. So within the current statutory scheme and the code scheme, there is opportunity for us to develop some policy changes, initiatives. We have reached out, I've reached out to my counterparts at different cities, not just the one to the north, but some others to see, you know, how they are developing a process. I think more than, it's an issue not just for Tucson, it's an issue kind of that is growing in a lot of the communities in Arizona. So our thinking is that we would like to try to have some direction for staff to try to develop an initial policy and come back to, you know, approval and feedback from Mayor and Council as to the type of criteria and structure for a policy we would want. There are things that we would want to kind of consider so that we can hedge off any legal issues or problems, like in identifying properties, we would want to have sort of objective criteria, you know, whether the property is vacant or not, for example, how many liens, how many repeat code enforcement activities on a particular property, you know, how long it's been, whether or not the owner has paid us in some way. Some things that are objective standards and some discretion can be applied, obviously, in figuring out a program of how we're going to select things. But a policy is sort of needed to be able to guide the staff to develop a targeted approach that makes some logical sense and that is in line with the kind of standards and concerns that our mayor just shared, and I know that a couple of the other council members share. So from a big picture, that's sort of what our hope and goal is. I'm willing to take some questions. I have some, you know, background information that I can share if people have questions.
Councilmember.
Mayor, do we need a motion, or are we just going to give the man?
If you'd like to start with a motion, yeah.
Yeah, well, let me say just one more thing. I support the staff recommendation, and that's going to be my motion, especially hiring one administrative staff person. This will increase the effectiveness of our code enforcement inspectors, who should be out inspecting, and it's not really their job to do the paperwork, the repeated billing, and will make their work more efficient. And in this case, we need to spend a little money to recoup even more money. These recommended actions will better protect our neighborhoods and recover the city's costs faster. So with that, I move that we accept the manager's recommendations on this matter.
There's a motion?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor.
Just want to make sure I understand what the motion is, because there was a lot of material that Shilpa and Carlos really didn't cover. The IAPC report indicates that, it says this, "The current system allows violators to exploit the code enforcement process resulting in protracted timeframes, repeat violations." I totally agree with that. The current practice is too long, it is labor-intensive, it results in cases being dragged out oftentimes for years. IAPC goes on, though, in their recommendation, says "The overall conclusion is the department is so understaffed and unsupported that they're unable to effectively enforce the code under their purview." So the IAPC cites understaffing. The staff recommendation is to add staff to code enforcement, business services, and the city Attorney's Office. I'm totally sympathetic, but is that where our staffing priorities ought to be? We're turning away permits every week, they're dragging on for weeks and weeks. Are you, as a city manager, comfortable with this recommendation while we know we've got all these other staffing priorities that we need to be looking at? And is that really, is that, Kevin, what the motion is, is to do these staff increases in those three departments?
I see the word "may" for those additional ones, but the shall would be the program coordinator, is my understanding, but Mr. Manager, your thoughts?
Mike, what are we talking about?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council, I think if you look at this, there's a few things. So the program coordinator is but one aspect of this. If you look at the bullet point above that, it's the abatement lien foreclosure program, which is something that we aren't necessarily doing the way it's outlined here. And I think the generation of that program in a way that ultimately we do take over ownership of some of these properties is the key piece to this. Right now, we're just, we're in reactive mode, you know? You call it in, somebody calls it in, we go out there, we deal with it, and then we're out of the next one. But I think, and this is a conversation that I know Councilmember Lee also brought up, I think during the budget discussion, we do need to put some resources. Quite frankly, and individual coordinating this can help guide what this looks like in terms of additional policy and administrative directives internally. So that's not happening today. I'll just tell you, we are not focused on that. I don't know that I'm going to come back to you with the recommendation that says we're going to add five more people, but certainly identification of an individual who can help us and coordinate this would serve us well. One of the challenges, and I've spoken with Mr. Rankin in the past, is this is a tremendous drain on his resources as well, or on the city attorney's resources as well. And so the conversation is how can we get as far down the process without, you know, being more of a burden, if you will, on the already overworked staff?
Totally appreciate that. You know, Carlos's folks are stretched way too thinly, but maybe this is a Shilpa question then. Setting aside the staffing question part of it, what process changes are you recommending that we implement now? Not the staffing, but procedurally, what are we seeing that's different under this motion?
So one of the things that we've looked at that can be done in terms of a change, Councilwoman Kusacik, is adopting some administrative changes. One of the focuses right now has been for us to get the abatement work done, and we do record our liens on the properties. However, we don't do anything in terms of tracking or requiring payments, coordination with our finance folks to be able to issue billing invoices to try to cut the work under current state law. If payments are not made on a regular basis, the city has the ability to then initiate a foreclosure lien. Even before you initiate the case, we hear from city of Phoenix, a letter of intent to foreclose being issued by the city with a record of non-payment has generated, at least for them, almost a 90% payment, and so receipt of funds that are then available for the program to try to utilize to have more resources, to do more things. In the event that we do have to file a court case, there would be some, obviously, you know, staff time, but I think that, as Mike mentioned, the resources there are more administrative rather than, you know, an army of inspectors being necessary. Our hope is to, as we kind of study this over the next few months, we can come up with some more detailed criteria to focus both administratively, but also to come up with some prioritization. So if we have, for example, a property that had, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of lien that we could try to foreclose on it, there may be some strategic things that we can do with minimal additional staff, but try to at least come up with some programmatic things that can help. There's some other, you know, ideas I think that we might want to weigh to come up with those, but I think that's more the thinking that is outside of the staffing requirements.
At the end of the day, I think that the process that we've been using now has been ineffective and inefficient and takes a very, very long time. And so I totally understand the concern about being short-staffed, but if we do have to hire a program coordinator, I think the position will pay for itself, and it will alleviate the long process that we now have to go through if we especially change the processes and mirror what we've been doing to those in Phoenix. And for a very long time, we have been, as a city, I don't know if you were around, but I was around back in 2005 and before, when we used to have a neighborhood safety, remember? What was it? Neighborhood Services Department. And because of budgetary reasons, the city of Tucson had to dismantle the Neighborhood Resources Department, services, Neighborhood Services Department. And since then, that's where we had code enforcement, that's where we had Neighborhood and Community Services. And since then, because we've decentralized all the services from that department, we really have not been able to take a footing on these services that are so important for neighborhoods throughout the city of Tucson. So at the end of the day, I think that by creating a program coordinator position and streamlining the processes to mirror those that Phoenix uses, the program coordinator position will pay for itself, and it will be a better delivery of services for neighborhoods. With that, I did see that Councilwoman Lee had her hand up.
Thanks, Mayor. My comments were mostly around what Steve Kay covered, just wanting to make sure that, you know, staff could have you know, staff could assure us that they have capacity, they have bandwidth to properly implement the recommendations. And if everyone feels comfortable with that, I feel comfortable with that. I know we have a big backlog on the code enforcement side, and that's a priority for this budget, so just wanted to hear that reassurance that we can do what we say we're going to do, and that's all I was looking to hear.
Mr. Ratajk, do you think that this will push the capacity of the department?
Mayor, and I appreciate that, Councilwoman Lee, I think it would be difficult for me to give you absolute assurance, to be honest with you. I think that what I'm really focused on with these recommendations is the organization of the approach, and then I'll come back to you with other thoughts. Now, keep in mind, we do have three vacancies in that space. We're working to fill those. As we fill those, that'll help with some of the capacity. But going back to twice, and I believe Councilman Dahl mentioned that they're about half of what they were at one time, that I don't see happening in the near term. I think just realistically, this is a challenge for us across the community, and the scalability of it is awesome, but it takes resource. And so what I'm hopeful is that by organizing ourselves around the program coordinator, there can be a conversation around revenues that are generated from the program, which can then feed itself, and then ultimately, we are in a position to scale it up. So that's the plan, and that's not a great answer. Not trying to be evasive, I'm just suggesting to you that it is a challenge, but this recommendation, I do believe, we can at least make some progress when we come back and report our progress on that.
Any others? All righty. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion carries. We move on to item two. Vice Mayor Kusaczek requested a discussion regarding the quorum requirements for city boards, committees, and commissions. Vice Mayor Kusaczek.
Right now, the BCC quorum policy is that you have to have a majority of the total number that are allowed on a particular board, committee, or commission in order to form a quorum. We have a limited number of BCCs that are quasi-judicial. Some of them are outlined in the memo, the Board of Adjustments, Planning Commission, Civil Service Commission. Those are not what I'm intending for this, but other cities are seeing the same kind of dynamic, and that is especially post-COVID, is they're simply having trouble filling the positions. And so just a couple of random examples, I looked on the current listing. For example, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee needs seven members present to make a quorum. They only have six appointed, so they can't even meet. Human Relations needs seven, they have four appointed. ESAC needs seven, they have eight, so if one or two people are absent, they can't meet. So there are several of those. I mean, those are just random examples going through the list. So there's nobody at fault in this. It's simply that right now, because of our current policy, many of our BCCs simply can't meet. And so the motion is very simple, and that is that we change, in those boards, committees, and commissions where it's appropriate, and that is setting aside the quasi-judicial ones, that the new quorum rule be that it is a majority of those who have been appointed to the board, not what is possible. And that would be a motion.
Good.
Councilmember Fimres?
A second to the motion, Madam.
Oh, there's a second to the motion, okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Dahl?
I agree completely. We need to reduce the frustration that I've heard from commissioners. The Energy and Climate Change Commission hasn't been able to achieve a quorum in many meetings. And so one presenter has been at three or four different meetings, ready to present, and the meetings had to be canceled. So I think it's very appropriate, and I'm glad to support it.
There are other commissions and committees as well that could easily, and we tried this about four years ago, could easily be folded into each other because of the theme of the commissions or the boards. So we should take a look at what we have and, you know, see if we could fold some of them in with each other. That would be an incredible opportunity to do that as well. I think we have about, how many commissions? Sixty-something?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three commissions, active commissions. And so if they're not going to work, then we need to figure out what we're going to do so that they can work. These are opportunities for the community to participate and give advice to mayor and council, and so they're very important. Any further discussion on this particular item?
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three. Vice Mayor Kusaczek and I requested time to be set aside for discussion and direction on how to facilitate the removal of offensive language contained in adopted CCNRs of many homeowners associations in the City of Tucson.
Councilmember, go ahead. I think that you brought this idea to me. I think that it's an important conversation that the community is having, and so it would be wonderful for you to kick us off.
Okay. Very simply, the memo and the article linked in the material makes the relevant points. Conditions, covenants, and restrictions, covenants, conditions, and restrictions written in the post-World War II years contain what are clearly racist, illegal language. They were, much of this language was exclusionary zoning, simply racist. It is outlawed by federal law, adopted in the Fair Housing Act in the 1960s. With the city attorney's office, I've explored several different ways that the city might intervene on behalf of homeowners who simply want the language redacted or excised from their deed covenants. The conclusion is that the city really is not a party to these. These are, CCNRs are private contracts between a buyer and a seller, and we don't have a role in it. I even went as far as to say, what if we invited neighborhood associations to band together and the city bring a class action motion on behalf of all of them into Superior Court, and said, "We don't have standing." Several states, though, have acted, and at the state level, they can make state law changes that allow homeowners to excise the illegal and offensive language from their CCNRs. And so very simply, I was going to ask that this body ask, under the mayor's signature, to petition the state legislature to act immediately, to give homeowners a tool by which they can excise the racist, illegal CCNRs from their, language from their CCNRs. That is not to say open them all up, because I know many neighborhood associations and HOAs that have deed restrictions, they don't want to open up the whole list of covenants and conditions and restrictions because there are other issues that are related to zoning and density and massing and all that kind of thing that they don't want to get into. But this specific language is something that the state can act on, and that's the reason I brought this for us.
And we both discussed that the best direction for this particular council to move in was to go to the state legislature and ask that this particular piece of language be removed. And we wanted to see how is it that, you know, Connecticut and California and Washington and Minnesota did this as a state collectively? So we can petition the state legislature, ask our, we can send a letter, or, you know, we can vote on it now to request that the state legislature do something about this. I don't know, though, and I'm sorry that Andrew's not here, I don't know if it would have to be in the next session, or how the timing of it will work, but we can absolutely move on it right now and make sure that the timing is taken care of by at least a representative of Tucson up in the state legislature.
Mayor, if you don't mind, maybe I can just see if Andrew is online. Andrew, are you online? Yep, there you are. If you don't mind addressing the mayor's commentary there, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, yes, if the mayor, like, I would take a positive motion on this as direction to work with our state delegation on the kinds of changes, and I'll work with the city attorney's office on some language that can allow us to make it easy or just allow for those types of covenants to be removed from CCNRs. Whether there's time to session, that's a good question. We are near the end of the legislative session, and we've passed the deadlines for new bills. That said, with your direction, again, we'll just continue to look for any opportunity, whether it's this session or in the next session, to get that change that you may be directing us to look for.
Did you want to make a motion, Vice Mayor?
Sure, and just a quick question, and you might know the answer better to this. Is it something that could be done through an executive order?
Within the City of Tucson?
No.
Or through the governor?
Governor, yeah.
I don't know. That's an interesting question. Andrew, would you know if this would be done? I know that there's, the executive orders of the governor have been limited, but would you know? Andrew?
So, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, and Vice Mayor Kusaczek, I don't know for sure. I can certainly check with the governor's office and ask. You know, I too have looked at some of the examples from the other states that have moved in this direction. In pretty much all cases, I've seen actual legislation, not executive orders. But to ask, and again, with your direction, I will reach out to the governor's office and see if this is something that can be done with an executive order.
Okay. I just, my motion would be to petition the state legislature to immediately pass legislation that provides an easy process for homeowners to redact racist and illegal restrictive language from their CCNRs, and better yet, if the governor can do it through any O'Call.
There's a motion. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Santa Cruz, and then Councilmember Cunningham.
I think I wanted clarification when you say redact. Are we erasing, or are we doing a strike through of racist language?
To excise them.
To what?
To excise it from the CCNRs, to take it out.
So to erase, so, okay. So I think, you know, it's important to, you know, denounce that racist language and, you know, and CCNRs. I think the reason I get concerned about completely erasing language is at the end of the day, that legacy continues today, and our communities continue to be segregated, and that when we erase that history, there's no context for why those things are the way that they are. And so I am trying to balance out what's the, you know, the material conditions of what these neighborhoods look like. It's like saying that we're colorblind and racism doesn't exist anymore when that's not the case. So just throwing that out for consideration.
Councilmember Santa Cruz, would you have a, would you have a suggestion?
I mean, I would say that we talk to, you know, people better versed and scholars of what the impact is than... We have time, that's for sure, because if this doesn't happen in this particular session, I know that there is a professor at the University of Arizona that is leading on this conversation, and so possibly doing a little bit of background to see how the other states, what type of language they're adding to their legislation so that the recognition of that history is still part of why, right? But at the same time, removing that so that new couples going into these neighborhoods don't have to sign the paper acknowledging those CCNRs. Councilmember Cunningham, and I don't know if there are any others virtually that want to speak.
Couple things, and I think we've talked about this before. I'm all about going to the legislature and asking the state to do stuff. I mean, that's important. I think it's pretty amazing that our Delta Sigma Theta sisters are here when we're talking about this item. I mean, that's kind of like God's work, right? But the bottom line is, is that why not start in our neighborhoods? Why not? If we expand neighborhood services, and I know we're about to take on some more staff right now, and I know how hard it is to find people right now, but the bottom line is, is that, look, the clock's running. We've got till January to go to the legislature, try to get a bill dropped. It'll go through that session. The governor will sign it, takes ninety days, and if it doesn't get out of committee, we have a whole other session to wait. We might want to attack this from the other side and find, and I know some of our own neighborhood associations are already anxious to try to help, but I'd love for us to be facilitating doing this work right now. And I know we are, I know that some neighborhoods are already doing it, but if we can make it a little easier to do and make the facilitation process, everybody loves a great idea. It's how well you execute that great idea that gets us where we want to go. So I'm all in favor of this motion, and I'm all in favor of the principles that we're outlining here, but I think the more complicated and the hardest part about a motion like this is actually getting it done, because it's not, it's so slippery. And watch, we're going to go into, to have some boilerplate situation where you're going to excise all types of things. They're still finagled in there, like this type of person, and like, you know how that language goes, so you've got to be able to find it all. And you only can do that going one neighborhood case by case at a time, and going through all those neighborhood association pieces. We ought to have something in our neighborhood association. If we expand our neighborhood association, that shop that we have, I know our person's retiring, but if we expand that shop to help neighborhoods along in excising, or not even just excising, but altering this language and acknowledging that it was there in the past, we might be able to get where we want to go. So that's kind of my soapy-boxy thing on this, but I'm serious about it. I think that it's great that we're doing, you know, we're saying all the right things, but the execution of this is way more complicated.
Councilmember Dahl?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand Councilmember Lane's concern about erasing history, and I hope we don't do anything that does that. In my neighborhood, Samos neighborhood, which is near South Point, we had these, and it's in my deed, and I hate that it's in my deed, but we will remember that history. My wife, who is neighborhood president and a partner, wrote a, they were doing preparations for a historic designation for our neighborhood, which we decided not to do, but they found that the stories of the people in our neighborhood were so fascinating that they wrote a book, Samos Stories That Made a Neighborhood. And in there are the stories of the people who were denied, and the first people who broke that, who came in. There was a Chinese-American family who had businesses on Campbell, who weren't allowed to live within a block of their business, and they finally decided to just do it, and God bless them for doing it. And we knew some of the people in the family who are unfortunately no longer there, but that's why I'd love to make it easier for people like me to get that off of the deed that will be presented to the next person. But we'll always remember that history, because that book is available to realtors and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just real quickly and in summary, probably 95% of the people who buy a house don't read CCNRs. They look at what's the mortgage payment going to be, when do I get out from under, what's the further terms of that. We have had instances that where people are walking into a home to buy a house in your neighborhood, in my neighborhood, and neighborhoods all over the city, literally, and they see this, and they look at the homeowner and say, "Oh, my God, you know, this is something that you represent. This language was written 70, 75 years ago. Doesn't reflect who we are now, doesn't reflect the ethos of the city, what we stand for, the values. It's illegal, it's unenforceable." And so to give homeowners a chance to excise that language from the deed on their home is what I'm after here. Not to try and hide from history, but to fast forward to this is who we are today. And Kevin's right, I mean, it's going to exist in the historical documents anyway.
I think we have time.
Simply not on the deed.
I think we have time to be able to, because I agree that the process of how we do it is equally important, and to a degree, I believe that there has to be recognition of where all that was happening. But it's not about hiding the history. I think the history is there. It's about acknowledging the history and doing it in a way where we do it with the community. And so I think we have time. If the legislative session doesn't allow us to move a particular legislative item forward, then we can... forward, then we can work with others. Maybe even the individual that's doing work at the University of Arizona. I believe it was this weekend that there was a community conversation about racist CCNRs and how they affect people to this day. So I don't want to be prescriptive in how we get it done, Mr. Ortega. I don't know if we have the capacity to do it neighborhood by neighborhood, but it would be good to, you know, to, to find some sort of path forward as to how we do it in a authentic, community-driven way.
What's the other states have done? And I've spoken to the, I've sat through the presentation as well, and he also points to it being done at the state level.
Yep. And I think that's the best way of doing it.
All we got.
So do you have, I'm sorry, did you have a motion? There's a motion in a second, correct?
To petition the state legislature to immediately pass legislation that provides an easy process for homeowners to redact racist and illegal restrictive language from their CCNRs.
And there was a second to that motion. Did you want to, did you want to add any particular language, just to make sure that we're...
We're trying to do that for this session, or are we trying to kind of...
I think Andrew said we don't, I don't think the new legislation is going to be listened to, right? Correct, Andrew?
Honorable mayor and council, the vice mayor's motion talks about moving as quickly as possible, but I do want to be upfront about that there is not much opportunity, at least under normal circumstances, for this session.
Understood.
So there is an opportunity, and I'll certainly talk to the governor's office, you know, we'll see if there's something that can be done, but I think it's more likely that we should be ready for the beginning of the legislative session in January.
That's real.
And that could give us some time to do it, you know, have some engagement with the community and have a much more authentic and informed conversation with neighborhoods.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Alrighty. So with the noted input, I would say, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We move on to item four. Item four, Councilmember Santa Cruz requested a discussion regarding the Pima County jail and inmate safety. Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is an item that we've been hearing from communities since last year, and I thought it was important for us to at least, you know, start an initial conversation here at the table. There, there was 10 deaths in 2021 and 12 in 2022. And while the jail is part of Pima County and under the jurisdiction of Sheriff Nanoz, it is within, you know, the Tucson city limits and within Ward 1. And we do contract the jail when TPD makes arrests and that's where they detain people. But I'm, I'm concerned that not, like, the current needs that we're seeing at the jail and a lot of it being around having overdoses, that we're not prepared to, to deal with that. And so I want to make sure that when we are putting people at the Pima County jail, that we're not sending our city residents to die at the facility. And so I want to make sure that we are having this conversation because I know that a lot of the people that are being detained there haven't even gone to trial, that a lot of times they can't make bail, so they're, they're stuck there. So I think we have a responsibility into why, I'm looking into why these deaths are happening and we need to, yeah, begin a conversation and have, you know, comprehensive solutions to prevent these types of deaths from happening. So I had just some initial questions and then some, some direction for the city manager. If we're keeping track of how many, how many of the people that have died in the Pima County jail in the past five years were arrested by TPD, or, you know, it's the city of Tucson kind of responsibility. If people need detox, how does a jail meet that need? Does the Pima County jail use Suboxone and Methadone to help with withdrawal? What is, I know that we have some challenges and we have people in the community working on bail reform. How do we, how do we get to help inform some of those challenges that families are having once they have a family member jailed? And then is the jail, you know, continuing to conduct sentinel event review boards the way that we have whenever we have an in custody death?
Mr. Manager?
Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, happy to look at all of that. I think those are questions that we can pose directly to our partners at Pima County and make sure that there's clarity so that you can have that information available to you. Happy to do that. If I get a copy of that, that'd be helpful as well. Thank you.
I think, Councilmember, that it's absolutely fair that we ask these questions and since the city of Tucson does not operate the jail, but we are one of the biggest users because we're the biggest population center. I believe that it's fair to go back, you know, ask the city manager to go back to the county administrator and Sheriff's Nanoz and ask for a report and, and invite them actually, as a matter of fact, to come to mayor and council study session to have a discussion, talk about what the processes, the staffing levels, the services at the jail are. This conversation can only help ensure proper medical care is provided and prevent overdoses or suicides or whatever is happening with those inmate deaths in, in custody. So would you happen to have a motion?
Yeah, I, I would. And so I move to direct the city manager to reach out to the county administrator to get information relating to the intake and care of detainees at the jail, including any information relating to recent inmate deaths.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Cunningham?
I've had the same concerns, so I did a little research. There were 64 deaths in jails in Arizona from 2017 to 2020. So this is not a new problem. Because what's crazy is, is that those 64 deaths from 2017 to 2020, 49 of them were our jail.
For what?
So we represented like 70 to 80% of the in custody deaths in jails, the jail deaths. And that was Pima County jail before. So this wasn't, this, this problem has been building up very much. In 2022, Rikers Island in New York City had 19 deaths. It serves 14 million people in the tri-state area. Pima County Jail, which serves a million people, had 12 deaths. We also had three already this year. The facility saw a high number of deaths, 10 in '21, 12 in '22. Of the 12 deaths in 2022, five were related to fentanyl use, three were related to suicide, two were homicide, two were under investigation. We also had two deaths of people who were granted compassionate, released and died in nearby hospitals. So for me, when the statistics are that far out of whack, we got a problem. Not only that, as we've talked about in this, at this table for the last decade, we've been getting jammed on jail board for years. And at this point, it isn't even worth it. We talked about actually going to Santa Cruz County and doing jail. We even have thought about building our own city jail. We talked about having extra money, but we've got to find out kind of where we can. Now, the one thing that I am kind of ride or die on this is volunteer jail. One of the issues that we have is, is that we've got folks that really need a detox. And for whatever reason, we don't have a secure facility where they can detox safely, they can get Suboxone, Methadone, whatever they're supposed to get regimented and properly monitored. We do not have a proper detox facility right now in Tucson. That's a fact. And it's killing us. Not, and it literally killing us. And for me, that's kind of where I'm going. Okay, maybe the city can help fill that gap. Maybe we start there. So those are the pieces of this. Y'all know that I have a background in, I worked juvenile probation for 12 years. I think I sent one kid to, to adult prison in the 12 years I was a probation officer. Everybody else made it through. And the one kid I sent, I still think, I still know his name, I still think about him. So for me, there's, there's a way to work this, there's a way to negotiate this, but we've got to find out some pinpointed gaps where we have, and one of those is safe detox. We just don't have it. So that's kind of where I'm at. Those are the statistics. I'm not trying to bag the county or any of that. I'm trying to say, how can we help? What I, what I'm trying to say to them is, how can we help?
There's a problem.
So that's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, and, you know, just for your awareness, I have been meeting with the chair of the Pima County Board of Supervisors, extended that conversation with our county attorney, Laura Conover. I know that the city manager joins me with those, at those meetings, with John Lesher. We are having, you know, discussions of our region, discussions that are big and affect all of us in this region. And really learning how to work together for the, for the benefit of our residents. And this is a huge issue and a huge question, and I know that Tucsonans ask about it and we all have questions about it. We, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's an issue of humans and human suffering and detainment. But it's also an issue of the city of Tucson investing a lot of money in, in putting people there. And so I would love to be able to have not just a memo back, right, but a report back and invite the county administrator and Sheriff Nanoz to come and, and help us find solutions together. Because I agree, I agree that detox is one of the biggest issues. I know that Pima County is working on detox solutions and they're discussing expansion of a facility that is much more appropriate for detox, that is not the jail. But that is something that I know very little of, so it would be absolutely appropriate to, to continue those conversations on a one-on-one with, with Chair Grijalva, Mr. Ortega and John Lesher, but then also at, around this table so that we can find solutions together. Any other comments? Councilmember Dahl and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your efforts in this area. And thank you, Councilmember Lane, for bringing it to our attention. I think we need to dive into this. When I think of prisons in Arizona, I think of my friend and now departed university professor and poet, Richard Shelton, who spent a lot of time in prisons bringing literacy projects, which from some of the prisoners he worked with was a lifeline out of there. When I think of prisons, I'm just sad that we still have prisons and that a long history of prisons have been horrible. I think of the Russian writer Dostoevsky, who said, "The degree of civilization in a society can be judged by entering its prisons, not how it treats its most distinguished citizens." I think that's true. So I think it's great that we're doing this. Thank you for doing this, and I look forward to further discussions.
Vice Mayor?
Just quick, do you know when, I guess either of you know when they're going to be done with, they've set up a blue ribbon commission, when they're going to have that report done?
No, I am not aware of when that report will be done. I know that we have started this discussion and dialogue with Pima County, with both the county administrator, John Lesher, a couple of their deputies over there and Chair Grijalva. So we will, you know, we will continue the conversation and Sheriff Nanoz is, is really the one that's driving the blue ribbon commission. So we'll, we'll await on, on what that blue ribbon commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors and the Pima County Sheriff. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Ortega? Okay. Any others? So I don't know why I'm forgetting of motions on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. If there are no further discussions, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Already, Mr. Ortega, you have your marching orders, know what we're going to do on, on all of these. Appreciate you all. That was the item, that was the list of our items for today. We wanted to have this study session because there were a few items that we had not been able to hear and that we just wanted to move on. And so with that, study session is adjourned and we will have another study session Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, that will be a complete meeting of the mayor and council, both study session and regular agenda. So with that, thank you all so much. Really appreciate your presence. Thank you, all those that are joined us virtually.